It's to determine if the district could cover its short-term debt. To score a perfect 10, the ratio had to be greater than or equal to 3%. And Fort Bend ISD scored a 2.75% in that question, so we did lose two points. Indicator eight is calculating long-term liabilities to total assets ratio with 60% or less scoring a perfect 10. Fort Bend's calculation came into 66%, putting us again at eight points. It might be helpful to note that there is no parameter for not scoring nine points, so if you're not at that threshold, you're automatically down to eight points. There's no way to score nine. Question 11, still under solvency, is checking on the district's administrative cost ratio. Our ratio was well below the recommended threshold of 8.55 at 6.27%. And these last three questions are related to competency measures, with indicator 13 questioning the accuracy of our PMS data as it relates to our annual financial report. And we're allowed a variance of less than 3%, our variance was 0%. Question 14 is referring back to the CAFR, and it's looking for instances of material non-compliance with laws related to local, state, and federal funding. And finally, indicator 15 is looking at a district's true-up situation in the instance of an over-allocation of foundation school program funding. So if the district's not monitoring current year what they're earning with the state, they have an opportunity to have state aid over-allocated, and then sometimes if they're not monitoring it, they spend it. And then what happens is they have to go on a payment plan with TEA to pay that money back, because they don't have the funding. So it's checking on that. That's a brand-new indicator. So based on these 15 indicators, Fort Bend scored 96 points out of 100 for a superior rating or a letter grade of an A. Okay, this last section brings us to the required disclosures. The district does need to disclose any gifts received over $250 in any business transactions that a board member or superintendent may have engaged in with the district. So as you can see, there have been no gifts received and no business transactions. Additionally, we are required to show reimbursement, I'm sorry, we are required to report information on the superintendent's income. And additionally, the superintendent's contract is available on the district website under the superintendent's profile. And the superintendent did not receive any additional income outside of Fort Bend ISD for the fiscal year 15. And finally, we're required to show reimbursements by a board member and superintendent, and these are made to be broken down in the format prescribed, and that's by meals, lodging, transportation, fuel, and other. And almost all of these reimbursements are related to registration fees and travel associated with conferences and/or district business-related events. And this slide concludes the school first presentation with a 14th consecutive superior rating. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions or open it up for public comment.
Thank you, Mrs. Edgar, for that presentation. We appreciate it. First, I'm going to ask if the board members have any questions or comments, Mr. Rice.
Yes, I have a comment, and I would just like to start off by, I need to ask Mrs. Porter a question about the two young people from Missouri City Middle School that were here earlier, and they won an award for math competition. Did I understand you to say they came in first place in what category, Mrs. Porter? What's that?
It was for math counts, and it's a nationwide middle-school mathematics competition. And they won first place in the individual category, and several of the students won second place and won one third place, and it's a national award.
So first place, we've got some first-place middle schools in the nation for math counts. That's pretty good.
Yeah.
Yeah. And so, Ms. Edgar, I just wanted to ask you, or just make a comment, that this financial integrity rating system was developed by the Texas Education Agency?
That's correct.
And this is the 14th year that we have been supplying all of our numbers?
Yes, sir.
And in these categories, I know we got an A, because we seem to be obsessed with letter grades in this state, but it's impossible to get a nine. I heard you say that. Do we know what the originators of this rating got on their STAR math test? It's a rhetorical question, but I would say that's a very good, very good, that's a 96A. So that's great. It's a great presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Do we have additional questions or comments from the board members?
If you summed it up nicely.
Yes. Okay, hearing none at this time, we'll see, is there anyone in the audience that has comment related to the presentation that was just made by Mrs. Edgar? Going once. Okay, thank you very much. Hearing none, we will move on to the next item under Information, which is a presentation on the A through F school accountability. Speaking of letter grades.
Dr. Megan Evans, our Director of Innovation and Strategic Planning, is going to present an update. You've been hearing about this the last few meetings, because it's something we're going to be facing in the very near future, and she's done an excellent job of keeping us abreast of this. So Megan?
All right, I apologize, I'm looking for my presentation that I saved to the desktop. All right. Okay, good evening, Dr. Dupree and Board of Trustees. I'm here to provide two updates to Information items. One of those concerning the 2018 accountability system and our A through F letter ratings, and then the next piece about a proposed change to STAR performance standards for our students. What I'd like to start with is an updated implementation timeline related to 2018 accountability and A through F letter ratings. So we have been eagerly anticipating the December 1 release of indicators that TEA was required by statute, as well as how the system was going to be calculated. We also have been eagerly anticipating the January 1 public release of the what-if ratings for our campuses. However, on December 1, we received an updated timeline with new information. And so what I've provided here is kind of a combination of old and new. So we did receive a list of indicators on December 1, 2016. That was essentially no new information for us districts and campuses across the state. It simply provided us what types of data would be included in the accountability system. For example, STAR performance, STAR growth, graduation attendance, a lot of these things we already knew were coming. What we're still lacking at this time is how the system is going to be calculated and weighted. We've got some initial information that, quite frankly, we're getting updates daily, but we've got no official information about calculations. So we are scheduled to receive that information from the agency by December 16, 2016. So what we're going to get at that point, hopefully, if pending no changes, is we will receive the data from the agency that they've used to calculate the what-if ratings, and we'll also receive the official rating system, how each domain will be weighted, how each indicator within the domain is calculated. So that information is expected by December 16. Another significant change is the public release of what-if letter ratings will no longer occur on January 1. So we anticipate that information to be released on January 6, Friday, January 6, 2017. We will receive this information, the preliminary ratings internally, on January 4. So that gives us roughly a day to a day and a half to synthesize and turn that information around, to make sure that we've informed the Board of Trustees, our district and campus stakeholders. So the Department of Innovation and Continuous Improvement, as well as the Communications Department, are working hand-in-hand to ensure that all of our stakeholders are informed in a timely manner, and that we make sure that we articulate the message that Fort Bend ISD is, and our campuses are, there's much more to it than simply a letter rating. So that's our current information on the updated timeline. We did receive additional information related to STAR performance standards and how that might parlay into accountability last Wednesday. So what we've received is a proposed change to the STAR performance standards. I'd like to say that this is a significant change, this proposal. Currently, we have three possible performance categories. So currently, in the last four or five years, our students could earn on the STAR assessment a Level 1 unsatisfactory, a Level 2 satisfactory performance on STAR, and a Level 3 advanced academic performance. One special piece to note within the Level 2 satisfactories, that's where we've been phasing in over time to a final Level 2 standard in the year 2122. So the proposed commissioner changes would look a little different. So students could earn up to four, one possible performance category per assessment. So what they're proposing is that students will earn a performance of did-not-meet-grade-level, approaches-grade level, meets-grade level, or masters-grade level. The minimum considered passing would be approaches-grade level. What I will say is that this aligns very nicely to our current standards. For example, for our Level 3 advanced standard that we've had since 2012, that will align with masters-grade level. Level 2 final, that standard-
Megan, can you define what Level 3 advanced is, please? The-
So that replaced our commended-for-tax, and Level 3 is that highest standard that a student can earn. So that's a set scale score, that's a set standard, but it varies depending on the content area and the grade level. So that is the highest standard that a student can earn on the STAR assessment. So how that correlates is, what they're proposing is that the masters-grade level would be the highest standard that a student could earn on the STAR assessment. So that Level 2 final, which is considered post-secondary-ready, that's the standard that we've been slowly phasing into, that will align to a proposed performance indicator of meets-grade level. And then Level 2 phase-in, which is what it's taken for our students to pass the STAR in the last few years, that will align with approaches-grade level, which is what will be considered the minimum for passing at the grade level. So what do these performance level, what do they mean for our students and for our community? So earning a performance level of did-not-meet-grade level indicates that the students are unlikely to succeed in the next grade or course without significant ongoing academic intervention. Approaches-grade level, which will be considered the basic level for passing, indicates that students are likely to succeed with targeted academic intervention. Meets-grade level, which aligns to our current Level 2 final, post-secondary-ready standard, indicates that a student has a high likelihood of success in the next grade level or course, but may still need some short-term targeted academic intervention. And that masters-grade level that currently aligns to that Level 3 advanced, the highest standard that a student can earn on the STAR, students that are performing at this level are expected to succeed in the next grade level of course with little to no academic intervention. So one of the important pieces to note is this is not final. This is a proposed commissioner rule. We received this information on Wednesday, December 7, and it opened for public comment on Friday, December 9. It closes, public comment closes, on January 9, 2017. The early possible adoption date of the rule would be January 9, but within the rule, they're proposing an adoption date should it become final on February 16. So what that means is these standards would be in play for the 2017 spring STAR assessments. So with that, that concludes my presentations with 2018 accountability and STAR performance standards.
Thank you, Dr. Evans. We appreciate you bringing us all this new information as you guys are preparing for it. I'm sure the trustees have questions. We'll start with Mrs. James.
Thank you, Mrs. Tosin. Thank you, Dr. Evans, for the presentation. I have a couple of questions. I guess let's start on the second part of your presentation. So the, these new cut points, as you describe them, the approaches-grade level is, you said the cutoff for that is where the current level 2 is at this current phase. I don't know if I'm using the right words, but it's at the current passing standard.
That's correct. So the approaches-grade level is what it took in 2015, 16-
Okay.
-for a student to pass the STAR at the Level 2.
And the meets-grade level is the, what we've been calling the final standard, which was expected five years from now, or something like that.
Correct, that's correct.
Okay, and so, what's your opinion on this new, on these new cut points? Is this going to be a good thing for our students to have a variety here? Is it going to be more information for the district, or what's your, can you give us your opinion?
Absolutely. So one of the things I will say is internally, we've really been looking at four cut points for a long time. Within that Level 2 satisfactory, we've always been watching that phase-in as well as the Level 2 final. So for us, there's not as much of a significant change. I appreciate the more user-friendly terminology, but I do think that we've got some opportunity for work where we look at the meets-grade level, because that's that piece that we've been slowly phasing in over time, and now that's what will be communicated to our parents and students, will be considered meeting-grade level. So we know that there will need to be some strong messaging behind that for our stakeholders. So overall, I think it's a good thing. I wish that we weren't there yet with the 2122. You know, we've had a lot of talk about the possibility of maybe a different wording than meets-grade level for that Level 2 final standard, but I do think it's a more user-friendly approach to STAR performance.
So is the idea that these cut points, if you will, are going to now, if they were going to rule and be in effect for this school year, or the data comes at the end of the school year, that they're going to be in place for the foreseeable future, or is there additional phase-ins and things like that that have happened in the past?
There are no additional phase-ins that are proposed in the rules, so it could be adopted as early as January 9, with no anticipated changes unless they push another commissioner rule.
So in this one sense, it's good, because it shows, it helps students and teachers and things to look at data from year to year, and you're looking at the same scale, the same information, rather than projecting or, as you said, using our, using the future standard, which can be confusing in conversation.
Absolutely. And in my opinion, there's a little bit more of an articulation of growth. There's a growth opportunity here, since there are four. One of the things that our parents haven't seen as far as communication is that Level 2 final. And so now there will be four cut points, and so being able to articulate the possibilities from growth, moving from a did-not-meets to a meet, meet to approaches, and approaches to masters. So I think there's a lot of good opportunity there for our students and for campuses.
Okay. Was this information kind of a surprise to you when you got this?
Yes, yes, it was. Yeah, we got this information Wednesday, and I turned it around as quickly as I could, but there's been a lot of traffic in email across all of the districts with our accountability contacts, really kind of surprised to get this information and what the cut points are currently proposed to be.
So it seems like it's not that bad of a change, or too difficult of a thing, but it also is concerning to me that we, as we're trying to work with the Texas Education Agency, they send us sort of surprise, hey, you're halfway through the school year, and now we're changing the, changing the parameters, changing the cutoffs, and it's not something that's necessarily bad, but it just seems, it just seems a little bit unfair to us as a school district to try to have to react to this in a very quick, in a quick way. So thank you for reacting, and thank you for explaining it to us. I appreciate that. And maybe along those same lines, we can go back to your first slide, or what seemed to be close to the front, yes. You were expecting some information, I guess, from the TEA so that we could, as I understand it, December 1 or 4, some information so that we could understand what our A through F scores were going to be at each of our campuses and at the district as a whole, but yet that day came and went, and we didn't get the information to make those calculations?
That's correct.
So it seems to me, again, this is another example of the Texas Education Agency, which is supposed to be our partner in educating our students, has put us at a disadvantage. We're in a difficult position, because it looks to me like it's possible that people are going to have to work over winter break in order to synthesize the information, develop a communication plan, and get this information to our campuses, not to mention our parents and our community. And I'd just like to comment that I find that very frustrating, because, you know, maybe it's possible if you have 100 students in one school, but when you've got 74, 75 campuses and we're, you know, that's a lot of communication that has to take place. And am I missing something in making those comments? Is there something I'm missing?
You're not missing it. You're exactly, you're articulating exactly what our challenges are. We had planned internally to run predictions following the receipt of the information December 1. But like I mentioned in my presentation, we received relatively no new information other than the extended timeline. So we are planning internally for that. The TEA has articulated that they will release this by December 16, so we're hopeful and we're going to be optimistic that maybe it comes Wednesday or Thursday, so that we can really prepare during our work time, but if not, we're ready and willing to, you know, tackle it over the winter holiday.
Okay, well, I'd just like to say that I find it, I appreciate that, and thank you for your efforts, and thank you to all the staff that'll be working on it, but I feel like we should communicate, Mrs. Tosin or Dr. Dupree, to the TEA that we don't like these types of surprises. It's not, it's, it's part of our job is to communicate with the community, and when we get this information in the form of surprise, it makes it very difficult for us to do our job in a large scale. And I realize that a lot of school districts in Texas are small, but we're not, and I think that they've put us at a disadvantage in talking about what's going on in our schools. And I would also like to just add that, and I've said this before, but I'll say it again because I think it is relevant, the message is not one letter grade. We cannot summarize what's going on in our schools with one letter. And if the TEA thinks that, you know, hello, we can give you a list of your schools and your district and assign one letter, and that tells the whole story, they are sadly misguided and mistaken, because that does not at all describe what we're doing in our schools and what our students are doing in our schools, as exemplified by tonight's students that were being honored here tonight. So thank you for your attention.
Thank you for articulating that so well, Mrs. James. And I would add that not only is it surprise, and we have to scramble to get ready for it, but we've just spent six months preparing our students under one set of criteria parameters, and now we're having to switch over in the middle, what, three, three and a half months before they take the state accountability? So I don't know if any, I'll go ahead and ask my question, because my question was, how does this affect how we're preparing students and how we've been preparing students, particularly at our two IR campuses, and how does, and how we've been analyzing the data related to those, those students?
So one of the things, you know, we spoke about our priority-tier campuses, and so that plan is strong. We're working that plan. We've provided additional staff. I believe Dr. Faust spoke to some of that, but we are looking at that data. That was one of the things. We feel very strongly that we've got to get ahead of this and make sure that our campus and district leaders are informed. One of the pieces that's nice about the proposed changes to STAR is that it does align with our current standards, so we're able to look at it longitudinally and be able to see exactly where we've been. I mean, all of that Level 3 aligns with masters. We know that Level 2 final, we've been looking at that for a long time. That aligns with what's meets-grade level. I think the challenge is going to be, one of, one of the implications will be looking at our assessment system, our local assessment system-
Right.
-so that our parents in May are not hearing for the first time that their student is approaching grade level or meeting grade level. And so we, we've got to be very proactive about speaking that same language, so that they're used to that terminology when it gets to the end of the year. And so it's not such a summative feeling that in May you receive this information and your kid's behind grade level, essentially. So in my opinion, it's got some implications with our local assessment system as well.
Well, and I would reiterate that it's frustrating that after we just spent six months educating our community and getting our parents used to one thing, and our students, because now we have data notebooks that our kids are carrying around, and we're making them responsible for their own data and their scores, and we've, we've trained our teachers and our community on all of this terminology, and now we're changing all of that. So it's very frustrating when there are certain mandates in place and certain, certain things that are within the accountability system that are already challenging for it to change in the middle of the school year, and it makes it very difficult, we know, for the district to do their jobs. So I would also say thank you to you and your staff. I know the board feels this way as a whole, for your efforts on this, and for the efforts that we know you're going to be making over the break, because I seriously doubt you get anything before the 16th, and I would be very surprised if you get anything by the 16th, so. Okay, any other comments or questions from the trustees on this? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, our next report is actually Item C and D. On number, on Item 6, it's going to be the curriculum update and the assessment philosophy update rolled into one report. And our Chief of Instructional Support, Deanna Seavedra, along with our interim Executive Director of CNI, Stephanie Williams, is going to present that report. Deanna?
So good evening, Madam President, Board of Trustees, and Dr. Dupree. We are pleased tonight to provide you with an update on critical work underway related to board priorities in the area of, in the areas of curriculum and assessment. You received an update on the 2013 curriculum audit recommendations in your board documents last week. Tonight's presentation will focus on three critical projects that are underway that are specifically related to the board's highest priorities and are related to the district's strategic plan. You'll notice on the table on the screen that there are five of the nine curriculum audit recommendations that we used to align the work associated with these projects, specifically the curriculum writing plan, which details the process we will use to develop curriculum and migrate the curriculum to the learning management system, the formulation of the Fort Bend ISD assessment philosophy, which will serve as the basis for us to design assessment and use assessment accordingly in Fort Bend ISD, and finally, the educational technology framework that will serve as a guide to help us migrate the curriculum to the learning management system and will serve us in implementing digital learning, digital and blended learning. At this time, I'd like to introduce Stephanie Williams, who will provide you specific updates associated with the written, taught, and tested curriculum. Stephanie?
Good evening. We'll start tonight with the written curriculum. The written curriculum, we will detail the curriculum writing plan. The curriculum writing plan will enable, or the curriculum, once it is written, will enable all students to meet their full potential. We will develop an unbiased, guaranteed, and aligned curriculum. Within the design of the curriculum, we will focus on support for student-centered instruction, which support the board, or the Fort Bend ISD portrait of a graduate developing skills of communication, collaboration, and critical thinking. A primary purpose in this work is to develop a guaranteed and viable curriculum. This means that the curriculum is so strong that all students have the opportunity to learn the content, the skills, and the knowledge needed for success. Its strength comes from its clarity and the time and pacing allotted to acquire the skills. The curriculum development will include supports for special education students, gifted students, and English-language learners. Ensuring an equal opportunity means that the curriculum will provide tools for teachers to support all students. A guaranteed and viable curriculum also supports board policy, the FBISD- A guaranteed and viable curriculum also supports board policy, the FBISD managed instruction philosophy found in EA Local, that requires teachers to utilize and align instruction to the content and pacing of the district curriculum. Development of a guaranteed and viable curriculum must occur in conjunction with the assessment plan so that the written, taught, and tested curriculum is aligned. The curriculum development timeline is divided into two key work priorities. The scope of work includes curriculum development courses. Those courses are beginning from the standards. They are being written or rewritten from the start. And this means that they will identify priority standards, form units, develop unit content and resources to go along with that. Examples of courses in this are the Science and Social Studies K-12 curriculum. That's part of our district's strategic plan goal. The curriculum transition are courses that already have an existing curriculum within PCG. That curriculum will be migrated or moved from PCG to the LMS, the learning management system, which is School-A-G. So, if you think of a folder structure, we'll pick up those folders and we'll move them into the LMS so that they can be accessed by teachers. Additional components of this work are to bring all of the curriculums up to the same level of standardized components. Because of the scope of this work, it will occur on two timelines. The curriculum development courses, we will have all of the first semester content done by June 2017 to be ready for training for teachers. And then the second part of the semester will be finished by December of 2017 using a phased, a phased unit of instruction implementations. We'll be phasing those units in as they're completed. The curriculum transition will have all curriculum migrated to School-A-G and accessible by teachers by June of 2017 for the August 2017 rollout. A more detailed phase of development for this, and a graphic was provided in the curriculum writing plan that you received last week. The opportunities, the transition to the learning management system and the opportunities in the district's strategic plan to revise our curriculum, provide an opportunity to standardize our curriculum components. We used a collaborative process with all of the instructional departments in Fort Bend ISD where we came together and looked at the curriculum audit from 2013 to determine what are the minimum components that should be included in a curriculum. Then we studied rigorous curriculum design to layer on components of the curriculum that would support the rigor of the standards. Finally, we are currently engaging in work with the Core Collaborative around student-centered curriculum. And we've added additional components, and I believe you have those before you tonight, that will support a student-centered design. When the curriculum is completed, it will support the achievement of all students with a standardized set of tools that teachers in grades K-12 can count on to support their One of the most critical pieces of writing or developing curriculum is that teachers have a voice in all phases of development. This graphic shows you what that voice will look like. The orange portion represents our writing teams, which are made up of a combination of the instructional departments in, in Fort Bend ISD along with campus teachers. Those writing teams will develop content and they will work in a cycle of review, pulling in campus teachers on a larger scale in order to provide input into the development of the curriculum and whether or not the components are written for ease of use in supporting their students. That is an overview of the curriculum writing plan. We will move now into the taught curriculum. The educational technology framework supports the instructional piece. So, the next few slides will detail a preview of the educational technology framework, which you will receive in this week's board update. The educational technology framework will promote the FBISD vision for teaching and learning in that it will work to make teachers facilitators of differentiated learning opportunities, provide a tool for individualizing supports for students, and, and help in technology to enhance the communication, collaboration, and critical thinking. The framework will guide the implementation of the learning management system. In it, you will find definitions of blended learning models, a timeline for the planned pilot projects, and the corresponding infrastructure build-out. Using the foundation of the, of the curriculum, the technology integration will offer teachers the tool to support students at another level. This slide details the curriculum transition to the LMS. If you look at the stair step, we will start with curriculum migration. And as I said before, that means taking the existing curriculum in PCG and shifting it over to the learning management system, School-A-G, so that teachers can access their curriculum in 2017 from School-A-G. Once we have the curriculum migrated, we will, we are developing the standardized components so that all teachers have the same resources to go to in the curriculum. Along with that is included blended learning exemplars so that if a teacher, an early adopter, were to decide to deliver instruction utilizing the learning management system, they would have examples within the curriculum to support that work with students. Finally, the School-A-G template will be developed, and that template is the venue for which teachers would access the curriculum in School-A-G. So, we'd need a high level of teacher feedback in that process so that there is an ease of use for them to access not just the content, but also the resources that they would deliver to their, their students. Professional learning will lay the foundation for this work on the transition. We've already started work with curriculum and teacher leaders in October and November. They've received training on navigating within School-A-G and also creating content in School-A-G. Leadership at the campus and district level will come on in January in order to support implementation of the end user, our teachers. And we'll be ready for training to start with teachers in May of 2017 with our support staff to follow. With respect to blended learning, we know that we want blended learning to enhance teaching and learning in Fort Bend ISD. We want to have a combination of face-to-face instruction, integrated or blended learning with technology, moving all the way to the right of the continuum with an online option for students to learn. This, in the future, will give students some control over time, place, path, and pace of their own learning. We believe that blended learning should be implemented using an instructional continuum, meaning that we would never go away from the power of a teacher in face-to-face instruction, that we would work with teachers to identify the purpose of a lesson, and then because of that purpose, to select one of these places along the continuum that would best meet the needs of their students for delivery of instruction. This continuum overlays the T-test, teacher evaluation system, in that you see a shift from teacher-developed learning to a more student-centered environment. This slide details the technology infrastructure timeline. As you know, we're working on a network wireless refresh right now. We have high school, we have high school and middle school being completed in 2016 with elementaries working in three phases between 2017 and 2018 to have the wireless network refresh. We will work with identified campuses in Phase 1, rolling out the technology toolkit to run a pilot to assure that that toolkit supports teaching and learning and technology integration using the blended learning models. That technology toolkit rollout will have, occur in three phases. And again, the draft copy of the complete educational technology framework will be included in this week's board report. The next phase in the written taught, is, written taught and tested is assessment. To ensure a viable curriculum, we must have assessment exemplars so that our teachers and students can know the mark that they're shooting for with the standards. Creation of the assessment philosophy and corresponding assessment plan will occur parallel to that written and taught curriculum so that there is alignment. The work on the assessment philosophy thus far has been focused on a review of research and our own professional learning. This means that we've identified the best practices around assessment. We've built our personal toolkit so that we can guide the development of an assessment philosophy in Fort Bend ISD. That philosophy should include foundational components like core beliefs, the role of assessment and instruction, and the purpose of assessment in an instructional program. This next slide defines a few of the core beliefs around assessment. We believe that assessment should inform instruction to promote student success, that it should be balanced, offering multiple modalities for assessment, that there should be a consistent feedback loop between parents, students, and teachers in order to inform progress, that students should self-assess, reflect, and set goals, and that all educators should work to become assessment literate so that when we give a student assessment, there is meaning to drive their learning. Balanced assessment means that we should have multiple modalities or types of assessments in order to inform decision-making. The three that, that are represented in research and that we believe are important to the students in Fort Bend ISD are formative, interim, and summative. And I'll give you a little bit of an overview. Formative assessment is assessment for learning. It's the most common type of assessment. It occurs daily in the classroom in order to identify what students know and are able to do and to change instruction to continue to support them. That should represent the largest portion of assessment in the classroom. Interim assessments relate to what Dr. Evans was just talking about. Interim assessments allow us the opportunity to measure students' progress towards a summative. So, where am I in November on my path to being successful on a summative assessment? Or where am I in March on my path to being successful on a summative assessment? Interim assessments are formative in that they inform classroom instruction, but also curriculum and professional learning work. The final type of assessment is summative, and we're aware of the most popular summative assessment in the state of Texas. But we also have summative assessments that occur at the end of a unit, a grading period, a semester, or even at the end of a year. A balanced assessment program is important so that all stakeholders in the organization have the information that they need in order to make decisions to support students. This next graphic defines a little bit about that purpose of assessment. The first two columns are around classroom. So, when we look at an assessment, we should be looking at our curriculum to find out what does that assessment tell us about the strengths in our curriculum, but also the weaknesses. And when we identify a weakness in our curriculum, we go to work then correcting and shoring up that curriculum so that it supports teachers and students. Instructionally, each teacher will use an assessment to monitor student progress and inform instruction. And then programmatically, we can use assessment to determine if a program is effective for why we put that program into our schools, or to identify gaps in programming so that we can inform future resource allocation. Finally, with professional learning, many times in discussing an assessment, we're able to identify content that can support our teachers. But most importantly, we can identify content and help to continue professional learning to sustain successes that we're having.
So, I'd like to bring these pieces together by drawing your attention to the visual here on the, on the slide, which really represents how the district's strategic plan and the goals in that plan work in tandem. So, when we think about curriculum and assessment, they go hand-in-hand to support instruction, and we provide further guidance through the educational technology framework. And so, as we think of next steps associated with the curriculum writing plan, obviously, first and foremost is for us to write the curriculum so that it's accessible to teachers through the learning management system and it provides the foundation for instruction. In addition to that, we need to be working on writing a curriculum management plan, which will serve us in subsequent years to make sure that we have a process to review and revise curriculum on an ongoing basis because we know that curriculum work is never done. When we think about our assessment philosophy, assessment, as Stephanie indicated, is really the vehicle and the tool that we use to gather evidence of student learning that's going to allow us to make critical decisions associated with programming, instruction, and resource allocation. And then finally, when we think about the technological, educational technology framework, again, that's going to serve us in the areas of integrating technology into the classroom and really to bringing to life that blended learning so that we are on the cutting edge of practices that we're using in the classroom. So, in closing, each of the projects detailed tonight really serve to provide the supports that our teachers need, but more importantly, the supports to student learning that we need for our students to be successful and reach high levels of student achievement. The curriculum, the, I'm sorry, the written curriculum provides the foundation for planning and quality instructional delivery, while assessment, like I said, provides the tool for us to gather evidence of student learning. So, I would like to thank you for allowing us to share this critical work that is the core of the business that we do as it relates to teaching and learning, specifically related to the board's highest priorities in the areas of curriculum and instruction. In your next board update, as Stephanie indicated, we'll be providing you several pieces of what we shared with you this evening. And specifically, we'll be sharing with you some critical milestones for the projects that we've presented tonight that will guide our work for the next six months. So, at this time, we'll entertain any questions from the board.
Thank you, Ms. Seyvedra and Ms. Williams. We appreciate you guys updating us on the curriculum. It is one of our priorities. So, I'm, just, do any of the board members have questions or comments? Mr. Rice?
Thank you, Mrs. Tosan. Dr. Seyvedra, it seems to me that we've been working on the curriculum for a long time. Am I to understand that we're going to be complete in writing the curriculum in August of next year, in about eight months? Is that what this slide tells me?
No, sir, not for all. Currently, we have courses in PCG with curriculum that are developed. All of those will be transitioned to the standardized components by August of 2017. The district's strategic plan calls for a rewrite of Science and Social Studies, completion of the K-12 Science and Social Studies curriculum. That follows an extended timeline through December of 2017. And then we do have a few courses in Fine Arts and CTE that will follow the year after. World Languages is a good example when we get up to Level 4 or Level 5. So, we're starting to make sure Levels 1 and Level 2 are complete, and then we're going up the next year.
Will that be in the board update that you referred to?
It was detailed in the curriculum writing plan, but I could provide that again if you would like.
So, we already have that information?
Yes, sir. Not specific courses, but the overview of content areas and that timeline.
Then the blended learning you're talking about utilizes the wireless technology, and that's a three-year, that's a three-year program?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Mr. George?
Yeah, I just, this is also on page number 12, blended learning. I believe that is a wonderful idea. Can you give me an example or explain to me how that looked like the part, student-directed learning? I mean, what does it look like? I mean, can you give me an example?
Directed learning, yes, sir. Through School-A-G, the LMS platform, we have an opportunity to provide open-ended, problem-based assignments where students might be able to identify the content that they would put into their project. And the digital resources allow them to upload media libraries or even assignments according to what they chose to study during that content.
So, that is a 24/7 learning. It is, it's always open?
Yes, sir.
That's the future anyway?
Absolutely. It works via an online access. So, if you have wireless, you can access School-A-G and work within that system.
So, how do we monitor what is going on there?
Each teacher has a class that's set up where students submit their work, and so it goes directly to the teacher with the functionality similar to our Edmodo program right now. So, it's monitored through the classroom teacher.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. George. Mr. Berdine?
Thank you. Excuse me. Thank you for the presentation. It was really informative. On the written portion, you had mentioned that there was going to be some teacher input, which I really liked the idea of. And specifically, teacher leaders were mentioned. And I'm sorry if I, if you gave detail on this and I didn't hear it, but is a teacher leader done by grade or are they several on a campus? What does that look like? What's a teacher leader?
At the beginning, well, that's defined differently in different contexts. But at the beginning of this work, principals were able to identify teacher leaders on their campus per grade level, well, at different grade levels in order to come in and give a preview, looking at what our curriculum was before we started the work and to give us some ideas around what they would like to see changed. Then from there, the curriculum review meetings are put into True North Logic, our professional learning system, and any teacher can register, or they can be asked by a grade-level team to represent their team. to represent their team at the focus group meetings.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Berdine. Do we have any additional questions? Mrs. James?
Thank you, Mrs. Tosin, and thank you for the presentation. Appreciate that. A couple of things, so I was interested in kind of the same things that Mr. Rice was mentioning about better getting a candle on the timeline for the curriculum and where we are. It might be, I have a lot of papers and a lot of documents, but it might be kind of lost in there at the moment. So I think that would, that would be helpful to us to just be reminded, if you could just point out where it is or something. And then switching over to the LMS implementation, did I understand that there's some curriculum that's going to be transitioned to that? And I got a little bit mixed up because you talked about a template that hadn't, maybe hadn't been determined yet, but that was going to be determined in February, but there's going to be some transitioning that went on this next semester, and some of this was going to be available or not, and there was a pilot, and could somebody, could you explain that again, please?
Certainly. Right, in PCG, the curriculum is accessed through a folder structure.
So PCG, just to, as a reminder, PCG is what houses the curriculum now, right?
Yes.
So when we talk about that, we're saying where the curriculum we have now, okay?
So the curriculum we have now is accessed through a folder structure. The migration of that same curriculum to the learning management system migrated in a folder structure. Okay? And so within Schoology, there are groups, and in groups, we house those folders. So that's where the content of curriculum is. The delivery of instruction in Schoology occurs through courses, and so there is a template where we can lay out some of the curriculum resources so that it makes it easier on teachers whenever they begin to deliver instruction. And that template is developed along a later timeline because we need to get the components of the curriculum ready so that when we go before teachers with some of the template options, they'll be able to see what the components that they'll be working with look like inside the system.
Okay.
And part of that is to really lay out a format that is user-friendly for teachers. Not only user-friendly, but also brings out the most important components for teachers to interact with as they're planning lessons. So that's what our goal is in determining that in February.
Okay, so I think I, I think I, I think I kind of understand it. It just seems to me that when we're transitioning from a system we have now, which is a list or a folder system, to a whole new style, a blended learning, learning management system, interactive chalkboard, all this kind of stuff, we're doing school a different way, or we're attempting to do school a different way. And so I just want to be sure we're, we're having enough visionary conversations about how we're going to do school differently, because we can be doing a lot of work all this semester, but if we don't understand what that's going to look like in the future, then we might not be using our time and energy really efficiently and effectively. So I guess I'm not, it sounds like the template is coming up as one of the next big milestones, and that sounds like a pretty important piece to putting together the components of, of the curriculum. And I agree with what I heard Mr. Berdine saying about involving our teacher leaders and our, our experts in that process, and the people that are actually in the face-to-face with the students to understand how they learn. I know, you know, my kids learn at the kitchen table, and it often has to do with one of these things, and a phone, and maybe multiple devices going on at the same time. Very little of this, and very few, very little paper, and very few books. So, and just watching my kids study, it's videos that they're Googling about the content and, and all of that. So I'm just, I don't, I guess I don't have a question in there, I just don't have a full understanding of how we're making that transition. I guess that's my, maybe that's my question. How are we making that transition?
Well, there's a number of pieces, as I mentioned, that are working in tandem. And as we think about the comprehensive process, the writing piece is happening, and there's learning associated with writing the curriculum and the essential components associated with that curriculum. In addition to that, there's a layer that we have to consider in working collaboratively with the technology department so that we have infrastructure in place so when the curriculum is migrated to the learning management system, it's accessible to the end user, the teacher being an end user, and also students being an end user. And in addition to that, you heard information about the assessment plan, because that is one metric that we can use to gather evidence of student learning and help us continue to make strategic decisions so that we are moving forward. And, you know, we're using practices that are going to really bring our students to the cutting edge of, of how they should be operating. So all of those things are working in tandem as we move through the process. And yes, it is very complex, but I'm very confident that we have the right team in place and that we have outlined a plan that's workable and that gives us benchmarks that are going to get us there by the time we need to be up and running in the fall, so.
Excellent, thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. So I think the bigger picture, yeah, I do have a couple of questions. So I think the bigger question, and maybe what Mrs. James was getting at, is are we making sure that as we work towards the cutting edge, that the next cutting-edge thing isn't around the corner? Does that make sense? I mean, are we making sure that as we write the curriculum and how we make it accessible to teachers and how they make it accessible to the students, are we, are we making sure that we're not doing all of this work to get us up to speed now, only to find that the next thing, that maybe we haven't thought about the next thing? Does that make sense? Is that, has that been part of the process as we're migrating and writing and thinking about technology and blended learning and that type of thing? I see Mr. Pham nodding his head, because maybe this question is more, or maybe it's for both of you, you guys, working as a team.
There are four functionalities that are available in the learning management system, and we've spent the greater part of October and November training the curriculum leaders around those functionalities, like online discussions, the ability to embed media like the videos that Ms. James suggested, the ability to upload assignments, so you take away that paper base, and then the assessment piece, so we can have a greater functionality with online assessment. All of that does depend on the infrastructure that Mr. Rice spoke about as far as the wireless connection. So the curriculum staff and merging out to our writing teams of teachers are gaining a full understanding of that functionality. We also have a teacher leader group of 40 teachers who are learning right now in the Schoology system, because it was recommended to us that teachers learn first in the system so that then they could conceptualize what that system might do for teaching and learning. So that is running a parallel process to curriculum development, but we're doing our best to get a large body of Fort Bend understanding that capacity so that what we build is usable for a while, but understanding that curriculum is a cycle of revision, so we'll always be improving.
Yes, and I understand that as well. So that, you made a good point, because my, my next questions were around the teacher buy-in. And I, I agree with Mr. Berdine's question and what Mrs. James had to say about getting the teacher feedback, but I have literally heard teachers say about some things that we offer them, that I'm simply not going to do that. I mean, I've heard teachers say that. So how, first of all, how are we going about, about getting the teacher buy-in, and are we sure that we're going to get, I mean, I think, I guess they're going to have to access it because it's where the curriculum's going to be, but are we making sure that the teachers are on board with this and that it's, it is something that's going to make their lives easier? Because that's what we need, is to make their lives easier.
Over time, I believe that it will make their lives easier. And we introduced the Schoology platform to principals this month, and they were very receptive to what teachers might be able to do. Again, the build-out of the infrastructure will support the ease of use as we move forward. We want to make sure that the content of the curriculum is strong so that no matter the current infrastructure at a campus, teachers have a level of use of the LMS that can support their students.
Well, and a critical part of the entire process, there are, there are critical places within the plan where we're seeking out feedback from teacher focus groups, and we're working through that process, because absolutely, teacher voice is imperative in this process, because at the end of the day, they are the end user, so we have to seek their feedback in terms of what tools do you need at your disposal that will allow the planning of your lessons to be more effective and efficient, and then provide you the tools to differentiate and deliver instruction at a high-quality level.
And we have a broad group, because it's different for, you guys have, I'm sure have a broad group.
It won't be the same group every time.
Okay. So my next question, you kind of led into it, and my last question is, how are we helping teachers to differentiate instruction given the pacing that is required by TEACs? Most of you know I have two students in high school right now, and it is impossible. It's just impossible. So my question is, is how are we going to use this system and blended learning to help our teachers, particularly at the high school level, but at every level, to be able to provide differentiation and the things that our students need in order to make sure they're getting that? Because right now, I will tell you, we're not doing it in a lot of classes.
Well, some of that, Ms. Tosin, goes back to curriculum development. And so I'm going to take you back to the critical components of curriculum development, and I believe that you all have a copy of that here. And you'll notice that there's a section that relates to priority standards. And so when we think about pacing a curriculum, what we know is that for every course and content, what we want to be able to do is identify priority standards, the 10 to 12 critical things that kids need to know and be able to do to be able to function in the next grade level and the next content. And so that is part of the curriculum development piece. So once we, once we identify those priority standards, then we associate other standards with those priority standards, and we begin to bundle into smaller units for teachers. And that really guides the pacing of the rest of the curriculum. So although we know that our state requires us to teach all standards, we will, through this curriculum development, prioritize the standards that really need to be taught at a very deep level, that are really going to be critical for students in their next grade level or beyond. And the lenses that we use really are, what are the standards that leverage learning beyond just that content? What are things that kids need to be college and career-ready? We also look at trend data in terms of how we've performed on standards in the past over the last three years. So many of those pieces will guide the selection of those priority standards. And once we land on those, again, that's a critical point where teachers come in to provide feedback to say, yes, this is a priority standard. This is something that as we think about a learning progression for a child, this is critical for them to learn, for them to be able to progress with their learning. And so those priority standards really guide the pacing and will help us with that particular piece.
Well, I'm glad to hear that we're doing that, because frankly, we, our kids can't wait on the state to get their act together on these TEACs. And that's the way I feel about it at this point, because I'm watching kids in my own house struggle. You know, the teachers are watching kids struggle, the teachers are struggling, and it's becoming ridiculous, the amount of information we're trying to shove into these young brains. So I'm glad to hear that we're going to be prioritizing. I, I think it's something that we have to do in order to help our students learn and build the foundation that they need to build. So thank you for that. The last bit of information I'll just give, this is not necessarily a question, but under the assessment piece, you talked about performative assessments, providing feedback to parents. Parents was part of that feedback loop. And I would ask you guys to please think about what that looks like at the high school level, because parents don't get feedback at the high school level. And I understand it's a whole different level and that, you know, they're training kids to be independent, but when parents don't get feedback about why, and when parents don't get feedback about particular assessments and what's happening, then it's hard for parents to help their students. And so, and that's at all levels, but I'm particularly seeing it, it started in the middle school level, but I'm particularly seeing it at the high school level. And we had a checkpoint where the school average was a 44. That doesn't sound good to me, but I don't know if it's good. I, I don't know if that's where we expected our students to be or not. And so I have no idea how to step in and, and support my child. So that kind of feedback, I think, is critically important for parents to get, what the checkpoints mean, what the averages mean, where do we expect kids to be at this point in the year? You know, we have geometry classes that have, that have literally class averages at the pre-AP level of 64. I, I cannot wrap my head around that. So we're, you know, I'm particularly seeing in math and at the high school level that we've got to help, we've got to help parents support their kids. So I just want to give that feedback as you guys are processing this.
Absolutely, thank you so much for that.
Thank you both very much, we appreciate it. I'm sorry, sir, but we, audience, the audience time has passed. When we break, the trustees will be happy to come out and speak to you guys. Moving on to the next item, attendance boundary update. Mr. Leopold?
I want to turn it over to Beth Martinez, our Chief of Staff and Strategic Planning. She'll introduce our guest speaker tonight. Beth?
Thank you, Dr. Dupree. Good evening, board members. As you know, we are planning to bring recommendations to you in January for the opening of Elementary School 48, Elementary 49, Elementary 50, Elementary 51, and Middle School 15. In order to bring you sound boundary recommendations that comply with Policy FC Local that relate to school attendance areas, we have engaged, again, with the DeJong Richter Planning Firm, and Scott Leopold is here this evening, and he'll be providing you the latest information that has been gathered through a very engaging process with the community and with internal stakeholders. And it is, as, as the policy indicates, it is a work in progress. It started with our demographic projections and working with focus groups that were from each school that may be impacted by a boundary change to go over, at the leading of Scott Leopold, to go over the boundary options or possibilities and provide input to that, to that process. And then moving forward, that information was, was, we took the information and worked in our, in our district planning team to further ensure that the, the concepts that were being developed complied and were aligned with our Policy FC Local, to make sure that we're utilizing our buildings to the, within adequate ranges of 80 to 120% utilization while adhering to the decision principles within Policy FC Local. So then in late November, boundary concepts were shared with the community in the areas that might be impacted by a boundary change. And we have just ended on Friday, December the 9th, the period of online intake of community feedback around those boundary concepts that were shared in those meetings in November. And in addition to that online questionnaire, we've also been receiving feedback through Let's Talk, attendance boundaries, through emails, and through phone calls and interactions with community members. And so what Scott will share with you this evening is where we are today, what our attendance boundaries look like today. He'll also share with you the concepts that were taken to the community in November. He'll give you an understanding of the summary of feedback from the various areas that may be impacted. And then he'll be sharing with you some scenario or some concept adjustments, some boundary adjustments based on the community feedback that we've received through this process. He'll also be able to share with you this evening some demographic information in our current state as compared to these boundary concepts, and feeder pattern implications as we work toward solidifying those recommendations to bring to you in January. And so with that, I'd like to turn the presentation over to Scott Leopold.
Hey, great to be here again. Beth, you did my first slide, so I'm not even going to do this one. I'm going to start by just going through kind of the northeast area of the district. What this map shows here, this is our current attendance boundaries, so the shaded backgrounds are the current. are the current elementary boundaries and so this purple area is Pecan Grove, kind of mustard color here is Oakland. This brown color up here is Barbara Jordan, the green is Madden and this other brown color over here is Oyster Creek. The, the yellow lines over here are the existing middle school boundaries and so you can see we have the, the Bowie Travis line right here on Airport Road and then behind it is also the high school line in purple. Here's our Elementary 49 location at Harvest Green. So what's happening in this area, what this shows, and I'm going to zoom in a little bit here so we can see this a little better. This shows our, our current capacity and enrollment and utilization for all the buildings that we have in this area. We've colored the utilizations which are based on permanent capacity based on the FC Local parameters. And so if the number is green, that means that it's within FC Local policy of 80 to 120%. If it's red, it's over 120% and if it's blue, it's under, under 80, I'm sorry. And so you can see here we have overutilization at Oakland, 166%, 186, 204, 215, and this is kind of our do nothing scenario. And so if these schools weren't open, this is what our utilization would be in these areas. And so you can see, we have the capacity coming online for Elementary 49 and 1718 and then that plan of Elementary 51 in 1920. And so our overall utilization goes from 136% this year down to 102 with Elementary 49 opening up. And then in 2018, 19, it's back to 115. And then once Elementary 51 is planned to open in 1920, it's down to 90 and then 94, 98. Other issue that we have in this area is kind of an imbalance in utilization between Bowie and Garcia. Bowie is currently 92% utilized, projected to exceed policy in 2021, while Garcia is pretty flat at about 60%. And so those are kind of our, our initial items that we're looking at in this area. We broke this, we broke this plan up into two phases because we have schools opening in, in multiple years. And so this first one is Phase 1 for Elementary 49. And what this does is this takes Water View and Harvest Green along with portions of Aliana, south of Airport, Windsor Estates, and then some portions of Aliana, north of Airport that are just west of Madden into Elementary 49. And if you remember the previous slide, the best that we're going to get to with those schools is 102% next year. And so that takes students directly from Madden and Oakland into Elementary 49. Our Madden utilization next year would be 103% or 874 students. Our Oakland utilization would be 108%, 826 students and we'd have 824, 97% in Elementary 49. Again, our overall average, the best we're going to get to is 102%. Just some extra considerations that we have here. Madden has a real, a maximum capacity due to site space of 952 while the core spaces for Elementary 49 are built to 1,000. And so Elementary 49 can handle that higher enrollment a little bit better than Madden Moving to Phase 2, all students that were moved from Madden to Elementary 49 would move to Elementary 51 in Phase 2. And we also recommend considering placing an addition on Oakland. Look at the numbers over here. 2019, we're 109% at Madden, 109, 110. Oakland, 120, 121, 121, that's the reason for the recommendation for the addition. Elementary 49, 86, 89, 91. Elementary 51 would open at 424, 518, 614. Overall utilization, 90, 94, 98. In order to address the, the balance of utilization between Garcia and Bowie, this is a recommendation that we had in our original long-term plan from 2014 to align the Madden feeder pattern with Garcia. And so in this recommendation, the Madden students would feed 100% a whole school cohort into Garcia and then as that whole school cohort, they would split back to Travis and so they would all stay together. So move it here to some of the, let me look at the numbers here and then I'll get into some of the feedback. So this balances our utilization. We get Bowie down to 82%, trending back up to 95, Garcia from 61 to 77, trending up to 88%. I'm going to show, this is a, here's our, kind of our multimodal learning. Our feeder implications, Oakland and Pecan Grove are going to feed 100% Bowie Travis throughout Phases 1 and 2. During Phase 1, Elementary 49 and Madden would split between Bowie Travis and Garcia Austin. Phase 2, Madden would become a whole school cohort split from Garcia, to Garcia and then back to Travis. Elementary 51 would feed 100% to Garcia and then a small percentage, about 100 students north of, north of Airport would split off and go back to Travis. And what this is, what this is a result in is just the, the growth that we have in this area and this is something that we, we realize that there is a split that we'll have to address in later boundary processes. Here's our visual representation of what the feeder patterns look like. When we look at feedback from this area, the top chart here shows our paper responses from the meetings that we had. The blues are the positive responses and the reds are the negatives. And so we had a pretty fair amount of positive response at the meeting, but when we look at the online results, it's more negative. Prevalent comments that we have throughout this is that new facilities need to be constructed sooner, concerns around multiple moves for students, concerns about not being able to attend the closest school, concerns around the Garcia-Travis feeder split, questions about whether or not this could be delayed until Phase 2. Just to kind of address some of these, I mean, we are constructing the facilities as fast as we can. As far as multiple moves for students, I believe this is something that's going to be addressed later tonight in the FC Local update, but that's something that we're very cognizant of as we move through this process. And concerns about not being able to attend the closest school, we've got to utilize those schools where we have them now. We have the capacity, we have the permanent seats, we need to get those students into those seats. And again, concerns about this Garcia-Travis feeder split, it's one of those things that, you know, it could be delayed, but we don't exceed policy, but we do have that imbalance between, you know, we have one school that's at 60% next to one school that's 100, you know, 100% plus. And so that's one thing to consider. Looking at our demographic impacts, I'm going to look at the free and reduced lunch. The left side shows our current, the right side shows our proposed. So Madden would go from 14% free and reduced lunch to 13. Oakland would go from 20% to 17 and Elementary 49 would open at 25% free and reduced lunch. 51 at 22. Looking at Bowie and Garcia, 24% at Bowie to 25%, 35% at Garcia to 32%. Moving on to Elementary 50, this is the, the current boundary map. I just want to point out, currently we have Barbara Jordan, which is a, one of those feeder splits that we currently have. Students here in Mission Sierra and Mission Trace currently split off to Bowie and Travis while the rest of Jordan goes to Crockett and Bush. Looking at our current utilization, of course, we have Jordan, which is 123% projected to go, you know, basically remain flat around that number. Segin, 108% this year, 120, 133, 142, 154, 165. And so we have some growth in this area. And we have the addition coming online at Holly and the new facility coming on at Grand Vista Elementary 50. Our proposed boundary for this, we've got Belford Park that would go to Elementary 50 along with Grand Vista and Mission Sierra. We have Mission Trace splitting off to Holly to, you know, utilize the addition at that facility and it's a pretty quick, quick travel time there. Looking at our numbers here, Holly goes from 101%. It gets the addition and some additional students and it's up to 85%, trending up to 88. Jordan goes from 123 down to 84. Mission West stays the same. Segin goes from 108 down to 78 and then 82, 83, 85, 88. Elementary 50 opens at 55% and then quickly trending up 62, 68, 74, 81. Feeder implications, again, we have that current Jordan's, Jordan split, 30%, 70% to Crockett-Bush and then we have that 30% which is Mission Sierra, Mission Trace to Bowie Travis. That split will remain, that's one of those areas, when we looked at this, we wanted to get the boundaries for this established and stay within policy. Because this is a dynamic part of the district, we felt that, you know, we're going to have to look at additional changes down the road just because of the growth that we're going to have and so we opted not to make middle school changes in this area just because of uncertainty of growth in the future. So as a result of that, we do have Barbara Jordan feeding 100% to Crockett-Bush. Elementary 50 would be 58% Crockett-Bush, 42% to Bowie Travis. Holly would feed 80% to Hodges Bend, Bush, and then 19% to Bowie Travis. And so we opted to just leave those students in the middle school and high school feeders that they're currently in. Feedback from the community, we did not have a lot of response in this area. We had nine people fill out paper surveys at our meeting, we had 59 online. Some of our feedback was consider moving Mission Trace to Elementary 50. And we've, in our recommendation right now, we've kept that as we have it with that split between Mission Sierra to Elementary 50 and Mission Trace to Holly because it, it is backed by policy, we're utilizing the seats that we have and balancing utilization between those two schools. Looking at our demographics, Holly is currently 67% free and reduced. It would go down to 64. Jordan, 51%, up slightly to 54. Segin, 37, 34. And Elementary 50 would open at 44% free and reduced lunch. Moving on to Elementary 48, Middle School 15, here's our current, this is, this is our Ridge Point feeder pattern. And so we have Schiff currently in this brown color. Heritage Rose is this, this, this large rose color boundary. This up here, this is the area that we moved from Schiff into Heritage Rose in 2014. Scanlon Oaks is in the, in the green. Sienna Crossing in the purple. And we have Elementary 48, Middle School 15 down here. So just what's happening in this area, of course, we have Elementary 48 opening next year. Additions at Schiff, Sienna Crossing, Scanlon Oaks come online next year as well. Middle School 15 opens in 1819. We'll have paved access from Middle School 15 to 521 and this has been committed to by developers by January of 2018. Looking at our, our current numbers, Heritage Rose is currently 95%. Projected to go to 175% in five, you know, within the five-year planning horizon. Scanlon Oaks, 124% gets its addition, goes down to 93. 90%, 87, 87. Schiff, 169% today, gets its addition, down to 140 and then right back up to 160 by 2021. Sienna Crossing, 105, gets its addition, it's down to 70 or 76 and then declines slightly down to 68. Overall in this area, we're at 121% currently. We get the additions, three additions coming online and a new facility and we get down to 85 and then we're right back up at 100. And so again, this is an area you have to have a, have an eye on for that future development. Looking at the middle schools, Baines, 115%. Projected to go to 143. First Colony, which currently has a portion of Schiff feeding to it, 113%, 113, 114, 119 and then 122, 123. Overall, our, our utilization goes from 117 down to 85% once we get Middle School 15 So here's our, our original Elementary 48 concept as we presented it. So looking at this, Schiff would be defined by the Fort Bentol Road on the south and Sienna Parkway on the east. We would move everybody south of the Fort Bentol Road along with the apartments that are in here, south into Sienna Crossing. In order to make room at Sienna Crossing for those students, we have that Shipman's Landing piece that would move to Scanlon Oaks and then the southern portion of Shipman's Landing would go to Elementary 48. Looking at our numbers here, Heritage Rose goes 95%, 89, up back up to 127. A lot of that is because we, we did leave a lot of the, the Sienna growth along this, this ultimate connection to 521 in Heritage Rose. Scanlon Oaks, 124% down to 100 and, you know, declining slightly to 94%. Schiff, 169% down to 86 and so we'd have 840 students in Schiff, 90, 91, 92, 93%. Sienna Crossing, 105, 103, 102, up to, up to 108. Elementary 48 would open a little low. It's 331 students or 39%. This was a challenge in this area just because of the dynamics and the, and the, just the vast number of students that are walkable to the existing schools. Some of the challenges that we had in this area in particular where we had Steep Bank West, which is Walker eligible to Sienna Crossing. And so we had some, in our focus groups, we had some interesting scenarios to get feedback on where we had some attack zones where students would hop over Steep Bank West to go to Scanlon Oaks. It made sense based on proximity to, to look at moving the Shipman's Landing portion into Scanlon Oaks. One of, one of the reasons, why don't we just put this, this area into Elementary 48? This is 300-plus students in this area right here and so that would be the difference between opening the school at 39% and opening at 85% and then exceeding policy within the first five years. And so that was the reason that we ended up with this, this presentation to the community. For Elementary 15, for Middle School 15, I apologize, the, the portion of First Colony that is currently in the Ridge Point feeder pattern would all move to Baines. Heritage Rose would split between Baines and Middle School 15, so areas north of 6 and off of 6 would stay at Baines. South of 6 and off of 521 would go to Middle School 15. Scanlon Oaks would, you know, the, the current boundary portion of Scanlon Oaks would attend Middle School 15 and we do have that 30% split that would stay off at Baines. Looking at our numbers here, Baines would be 94% up to 102. First Colony from 114 to 81. Middle School 15 would open at 76 and then up to 93. So our feeder implications, Schiff will no longer feed to First Colony. Schiff and Sienna Crossing will feed 100% to Baines. 48 will feed 100% to 15. Scanlon Oaks will have that split and Heritage Rose will have that split. Feedback from the community was pretty balanced at the meetings. We had people in favor and people opposed. We had 92 paper questionnaires collected and 510 online questionnaires collected in this area. Kind of a prevalent feedback, not in favor of splitting Scanlon Oaks between Baines and Middle School 15. Sienna Crossing appears to be overutilized while Schiff is under 100%. And again, we had some concerns about Ridge Point High School and per policy, that's something that we look at every year, but in this process, we're focused on getting the boundaries established for these schools that we're opening. Based on the, the feedback from the community, we made a couple modifications to our concept that, that still remain within policy and I think they're good modifications. So what we did here was, I'm going to lovingly call this the shark fin. This is, you know, an apartment complex off of 521 that we originally had moving to Sienna Crossing. We looked at putting them back into Schiff. Unfortunately, they were there in 2014 and this is something we look at moving back to kind of balance that utilization, clean up and square off that boundary a little bit. We also had a portion of the, that area that we left in Heritage Rose that will not have direct access to 521 until we have that access, you know, attached to the middle school. And so this would, we'd have a development in here that would have to go all the way up Sienna Parkway, back down 6 to 521 and so it made sense to just... And so it made sense to just put them into Elementary 48. So when we look at this, it balances the numbers a little bit better. Heritage Rose does not exceed policy in 2021. Scanlon Oaks remains unchanged. Schiff would go 91, 96, 97, 98, 99%. Sienna Crossing stays under 100% all the way until 2021. Elementary 48 gets a little bit better because of that growth right here. So we'd be over, you know, almost 500 in 1920, and then almost 800 in 2021. What we also looked at based on the feedback was what if we just took Shipman's, Shipman's Landing and fed them to Middle School 15 so that we'd have that whole school cohort from Scanlon Oaks going to Middle School 15 instead of that 70-30 split? And so when we did that, our numbers at Baines got a little better, 84% up to 93. First Colony unchanged. Middle School 15 would open at 88%, get to 121, or get to 101% by 21, 22. As we looked at this, it's, it's within policy. We know that this is a growing area and that there's going to have to be future boundary changes based on additional growth that's coming down the pipeline. And so this was something that we looked at that, you know, the community gave us some good feedback on that made sense to implement or to include into the recommendation at this point. Looking at our socioeconomics in this area. Heritage Rose would go from 72% free and reduced lunch to 76. See if I can read this without moving it. Scanlon Oaks would go to 4%, 3%. Schiff from 10% to 14%. Sienna Crossing would stay the same at 7%. Elementary 48 would open at 8%. Baines is currently 24%, would remain 24%. First Colony, again, 16%, currently 16%, remained 16%. Middle School 15 would open at 21%. And when we looked at the numbers and the balance, oh, now I did it. This piece, wherever this, this Shipman's Landing piece goes, if it goes to Baines, Baines is 21%, and Middle School 15 is 24, and vice versa. And so there's a, I think it's a pretty good balance between the two middle schools. So looking at this, our feeder patterns in this area. Heritage Rose would have a 55% split to Middle School 15, 45% to Baines. Everybody else would be 100% feeders. And so our, our next steps are to, you know, develop these further, maybe based on some more feedback, provide that boundary change documentation to you for a meeting in January. Does that have anything to add before we take questions?
No.
Okay.
Open for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Leopold and Ms. Martinez. Do we have questions or comments from the trustees? Mr. Rosenthal.
Thank you, Scott. That's a very good presentation. I think your proposals seem to make a lot of sense. I think we're seeing a lot of balance. Of course, you know, we'd try, like to try to make as many people as happy as possible, but, you know, we know that that's never possible. But it seems, it seems like it's a good plan. Thank you for considering some of the feedback and putting some of those recommendations into that plan already. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. Anyone else? Mrs. James?
Well, I feel like I've just been through a little bit of a whirlwind there, trying to follow all that. So my, I think for me, I need to study up a little bit to kind of catch up to all the things you said. My first pass is looking at the feeder patter implications on the west side. There's a lot of splits over here. And a, and not, yeah, that's on slide, page nine, I think. So on First Pass, I don't really like that, but I need to kind of study up. I see some that are 10 and 20%. That's, that's not, I don't feel good about that. And I do recall that, well, I recall some things about that one section you were talking about that we kept, I think we kept it in Jordan, thinking that there was going to be a change this time around to something else to reduce the population in Jordan a little bit. So I'll have to look at it a little bit, but my initial concern is on that slide right there.
Okay.
Thank you, Mrs. James. Anyone else? So I have-
Let's ask, what is, sorry.
Okay.
What is the highlighted square, what do the highlighted squares mean on that?
It means that there's a battery change implicated.
So I have the same concern. My biggest concern being that 100 students from Elementary School 51 to Garcia would feed to Travis while the remaining students would feed to Austin. I don't like that. Why would, why would 100 students, why does that make a difference?
So kind of part of our issue in this area is just the, the vast density that is associated with the, the current Madden boundary. There's just, there's not enough room in the facility for the students that live right here. And so this is not, I mean, we, we can't fit, I mean, what we ended up doing in Phase 1 is we, we have basically the four corners here of Eliana and Old Orchard remain in Madden for Phase 1. This growth here that is directly adjacent to the school, it ends up being more like almost 200 students within the next three or four years. And so based on that, that kind of hard capacity at Madden, we just can't keep those students there to do that. And what that ends up doing is we have this, in Phase 2, we have this piece that protrudes up here north of Airport because they physically can't, I mean, this is what's left of the Madden boundary.
So I'm confused because I'm not talking, this doesn't say Madden. This says it splits between Travis and Austin.
Correct. Let me, let me get there.
Okay.
And so this is the area that we're talking about. And so what this, what this does, when we look at the middle schools, is that they, they do feed back to Garcia because of that north of Airport piece. We could leave them at Bowie and Travis, but it would be the only portion of 51 that would feed to Bowie and Travis. And so it's one of those things that we know that there's going to be future change in this area just because of the growth. It's, it's, it's a, it's a tough issue right now.
So I, I will take additional questions offline. I think I just need to dig into the data a little bit, maybe have you explain it to me.
Okay.
So that I can look at the boundaries a little bit more. I'm also going to have to study, I study, of course, the Sienna is my area. And I appreciate you looking at the feedback and giving us a, at least another option based on that feedback. I just want to confirm, because my concern was the demographics. I want to make sure that we have a good balance in the area. And it looks like from the table you've shown that, I'm trying to get to it, 30, table, I guess on page 30, that the demographics between Baines and Middle School 15 would be the same either way.
Yeah, it's just, you know, which school do you want at 24 and which school do you want at 21?
Okay.
And that's, that's, that's that Shipman's Landing shift.
Okay. Okay. Thank you for the presentation and all the information for us to go home and study a little bit further.
I have one-
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. George. I'm sorry, sir, we don't take questions in the middle of the meeting. When we're done here, if you have questions, the administration will be available to answer and board members will be available for you to talk to. Thank you. Mr. George.
Yeah, yes, Scott, I have, refresh my memory. I'm going to the slide number 23.
25?
23. Elementary 48.
Okay.
That little piece, we are, we are trying to sew it to Scanlon Oaks, right? That little-
One.
What, refresh my memory, what was the reason why we are doing that?
So in order to, you know, we, we have this big, this big population up here at Schiff, and in order to relieve that, we have to kind of shift everybody down.
Okay.
And this was about 300 students that we could not put them into Elementary 48-
Okay.
-because of just the sheer number of students. And, you know, we, we looked at possibly cutting up, you know, this planning unit right here around Scanlon Oaks, but all those students are Walker-eligible. And so in the, in the modified version, you know, that we present, I presented later, they stay together at Scanlon Oaks and then go to Middle School 15 together.
Okay. And, and also is that the same on slide number 29 for Middle School 15? That same area you're talking about?
Correct.
Okay.
And Middle School, so in that one, they would not go back to Baines, they would go to Middle School 15.
Middle School 15. Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. George. Mrs. James, you have another question? Go ahead.
In this presentation, I heard you referring to Phase 1 and Phase 2, and I'm not clear on what that means.
Phase 1 is Elementary 49 changes, and Phase 2 are changes after we have Elementary 51 online.
Okay. And so, wow, this makes you dizzy to watch that. Don't look. So 49, we know, no. 49 and 50, we're expecting to open in the fall of 2017.
Correct.
And 51, in these spreadsheets, is opening in 2018? No.
19.
19, 20. So that's two years later.
Correct.
And so we're making these plans so that we don't need to go through this process again? Or these are kind of like a starting point of a plan? Or what is the thinking that we're doing this so far out without having the, knowing what the building is going to be like in that area?
I, I think that the plan is that if our projections hold, that we do not have to come back and revisit it, but if there are some major changes in the area with demographics, we may have to come back and revisit it before that opens.
Okay. And what year was that projected? 2000?
2019, 20 planned.
Thank you, Mrs. James. If we don't have additional questions, we will go ahead and, thank you, Mr. Leopold. We appreciate you taking us through the very complex information that we have in front of us. We are going to now convene in closed session under the Texas Open Meetings Act, Chapter 551 and those listed in the agenda, and for the purpose of private consultation with the board's attorney on any and all subject or matters authorized by law. We are now convening in closed session.